Hi. Welcome to a special meeting of the Fairfax Town Council. And, let me see, I guess this called it order and I guess we should start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call would show that everybody is in attendance. Do I hear a motion for approval of agenda and affidavit of posting?
So moved.
Exactly.
Okay. Kohler, Wansaw? And, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That's unanimous. Let me see. I should, it doesn't say two on here. I guess there's nothing to report out of closed session. We basically consulted on a legal matter and gave direction. And that's about it to report, anyway. Okay. So on the regular agenda, discuss, consider a word of contract for Forest Avenue Road Stabilization Project. Approximate location is 345 Forest Avenue. Garrett, do you want to do a staff report?
Sure. Just to point out that you received the original staff report and then you received the supplemental based on the one bid that we received. But, that being said, kind of the background, you know what the winter storms for Forest Avenue was damaged. We were first closed the road in February. In March, the council actually declared a local emergency for basically approximate locations now, 92 Madrone, 300 Tamalpais and 345 Forest Avenue. What that meant is it waived our competitive bidding requirements and asked us to try to facilitate the projects. So, since that time, I think I reported back in July and previously, that indicated originally we thought the project was reimbursable under FEMA. It turns out it's not because it's on a classification map under Caltrans, which means that we had to shift gears and actually apply to the Federal Highway Administration for emergency relief funding. That's administered by Caltrans. At this point, Caltrans hasn't made a ruling, one way or another, whether or not there is funding and then if so, how much. However, Caltrans has made pretty clear to us, and we reported this at our, I think at our July, maybe at our August meeting, but I'll get back to that, that how that works is if we were to receive emergency relief funding, most likely what that would mean is we wouldn't be able to proceed with the project probably till spring of next year because the project would have to go through the normal Caltrans approval process, which actually takes quite a bit of time with field reviews, environmental assessments if needed, engineering reviews and so on, just like for the bridge project. So, that'd be the earliest if we decided to wait around for emergency relief funding. Now, in July and August, I did indicate in July that actually we would go ahead and bid out for us. Because at the time when we first came up for us, we weren't sure where it was going to be in terms of cost. And we, once we realized it was going to be over the threshold, we went ahead and bid it out. We opened the bids on August 10th. The one bid we received was for almost $400,000, about $140,000 or over 50 percent higher than the engineer's estimate. So, before I get to the, let's see, sorry, I'm just jumping out. I think I already reported that at the August 2nd. Okay. So, here's where we're at right now. So, the engineering firm has indicated that, we only got one firm to respond and that it's significantly higher than the engineer's estimate. Lot of that is we found many of the firms are busy that do this type of work and as a result, costs are higher. Now, it should be noted that there was at least one firm that could not submit a bid because they didn't get their bid bond in on time. So, they did not submit a bid even though they were intending to. So, just keep that in mind. So, what we're recommending actually is that we reject all bids and that we go ahead and rebid the project, but let's redesign it. So, right now, the project is a 24-foot road of which 18 feet is pavement and then you'd have a shoulder. And the reason we did for the full size is because when we first started this, FEMA indicated they would restore things back to the original condition, so it only made sense, let's restore it back to its original condition. Obviously, since that time, we found it wasn't eligible for FEMA funding and federal highway funding and here we are. So, our recommendation is we redesign the 18 feet of pavement. So, what does that mean? Well, on the disadvantages, you probably will lose about three parking spaces, we believe. It's about 100 feet of road of which you would repair the road and have a retaining wall along that portion of the slope. So, we think that would actually save, retaining wall would go from eight feet to four feet, probably save us over $100,000 when you start adding in the other things that would be a savings. At 18 feet of pavement, what that means is the pavement would pretty much match the pavement on both sides, both sides of the road, it's just that you would have a shoulder. Our quick analysis of our roads in town on the pavement management report is about 30 to 40 percent of your roads in town probably have 18 feet or less of pavement. Generally, 18 feet's enough for two cars to pass each other safely. Some of the other things that we took a look at is it's no impact on emergency vehicles. On the parking side, we're not sure how those parking spaces developed. It looks like, at least our engineer tells us, that maybe over time Phil got added into those parking spaces and created those parking spaces. The problem with that, and we find this in other roads, is that that puts extra stress on the edge of the road where maybe that wasn't originally intended. And sometimes that does cause, you know, further damage to the hillside and could contribute to once again all that rain, that type of thing. In terms of redesign, what it would do is probably take us one, two weeks to redesign. We probably would bid it out for the minimum two-week period. Where that would put us, if we actually decided to do that, would be probably in mid-September, we'd have bid opening, we would request a special council meeting to actually award the bids. Now, keep in mind, if you award the bid, that's going to most likely preclude, pretty sure, any federal funding that you could receive for this project because you've done something without even receiving the official E76. It's a form, that's what they call it, but it's authorization to proceed with a project. So, I just need to make that point entirely clear. But, the plus side, if you do that, is then you could probably have the project with mobilization, some other things, probably begin the beginning of October, probably complete around mid-November. They have 30 working days, probably wouldn't take that long. And that's probably fine in terms of avoiding the bulk of rainy season, we get the project done. So, that's kind of where we're at. We think as, from a perspective of trying to save a significant amount of funds, since we'll have to come back to you with the funding source, right now, we're just thinking it'd be general fund reserves. Your options are you could reallocate funding from other projects. You do have a series of projects in which we are borrowing from the county to front-load some pavement improvement projects and other street improvement projects. You could defer some projects and so on, but I think we could save that discussion for later when you decide how you want to proceed. So, again, what this option is doing, unless Caltrans comes back and says, yes, you're awarded and yes, you could start tomorrow, most likely it precludes federal funding, but I think we could stand to save over $100,000. So, if the bid was 400, I think we'll, project would probably come in under 300. That's our best guess at this time. With that, that concludes the staff report.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Thanks, Garrett. Yeah, I was going to say, the questions from?
Yeah. So, Garrett, when you talk about the 24-foot width, you're talking about 24 feet including the soft shoulder on the side?
That's correct.
18 is just pavement?
Yes.
And no soft shoulder?
No soft shoulder.
Okay. And then east and, east, east and west of that section of road, that 100 feet of road, what's the width?
We believe it's 18 feet. So, the goal is it will match the pavement as it connects into it. Now, there's other parts of Forest that are wider than 18 feet, but in that section, there really wouldn't be a transition problem.
Garrett? Since we're going to have to cover the nut on this, the original engineer's estimate is $260,000, but that's for the wider road. If we're going to save approximately $100,000, this would bring the, hopefully, the bid-up amount to about $160,000.
Under that scenario, yes, but again, we've found that, and we'll report this in the next item, is that contractors that we've been contacting to try to get estimates for other projects are just significantly higher than the engineer's estimate.
I sort of say this with the community who's here today to understand that we're not, we're paying for this and that we wouldn't be getting any reimbursement from anybody. So, the smaller width of the road, while generally unjustified, we would want to give people exactly what they had before the storm, there's a reason why we would narrow it a bit because we are going to pay 100 percent of this gig.
That's correct.
Any other?
Yeah.
Peter?
So, the other piece of concern to me is the retaining wall height. So, what, was there an existing retaining wall there prior to the slide?
No.
Nothing? Okay. And so, I would love to understand a little bit of the difference between, except for the obvious difference, between an eight-foot and a four-foot in terms of holding back what that hillside looks like?
Now, I'm not an engineer.
Okay.
But my understanding is, the higher the wall goes, the deeper you need to have your pilings in the ground to support the wall. So, as you go with a smaller wall, your pilings and what you have to do in terms of tie-backs, you may, tie-backs are the things that kind of hold it into the hillside, goes into the hillside. You may not need tie-backs, you may be able to get by with the pilings and the retaining wall. And so, but that's something that will come through the design, but the engineer was pretty confident you would save probably at least $100,000, if not more.
Is there a possibility, we reject this bid, it goes away, we put out a request for bids for this smaller project, is there a chance that we don't get any bids on it? And then what, and then?
There's always a possibility you may not receive bids. However, in my experience, you'll usually have at least one enterprising firm that's willing to stand there and what they do is they usually have two envelopes. One envelope if there's someone else's bidding, because everyone stands there. Bid opening's at 2:00, everybody stands there prior to 2:00.
At 1:55, yeah.
Holding their envelope. And in this case, they just said, oh, no one's here, I'll give you this envelope. And in their mind, it's if you want the project bad enough, you'll pay this amount. And so, that's how it works. And that worked that way for the Class 1 bike spine project, uh, gap, the gap completion Class 1 bike lane, if you recall. When we bid it out originally in, I think it was late last year, we only got one proposal and it was almost, it was over 50 percent. And then we bid it out again in spring and it came in pretty close to the engineer's estimate because it was, we received more than one proposal.
So, in the event that we go down this route and we don't have an acceptable bid or whatever, what would the plan be for the winter? I mean, the road wouldn't get fixed, it's just going to be, would just be kind of status quo?
I think what we would do is this, if the decision was made, let's wait for federal funding, then what we would do is we would go in and probably sheet and sandbag the hillside to try to prevent any further erosion of the hillside. So, we would take some type of what's deemed emergency protective measures on the hillside that is reimbursable from the federal government. And so, we would go ahead and do that if we had to. Now, obviously, you know, that's no guarantee that things wouldn't worsen, but it's a way to try to protect the situation.
Right. Okay.
So, question, thank you, Mayor. On this other bidder that didn't have an, they were late, do we plan to reach out to the same bidders, including them, to make sure that they will submit probably?
Right. I would assume, I'm guessing, if they did order a bid bond and it didn't come in in time, the second time around, you would think that they would be on top of things.
Is there anything that, are we precluded from reaching out to them specifically and saying, we're going to rebid this?
No, no. We let everyone know because we have to let firms, we let the firms know that the bid was rejected.
Okay. So, I guess, I'm, I think, I think Peter's questions were really good as far as what happens if we rebid this and we don't get somebody else, but I think we will. And I think, I don't think anybody on this council is wanting to wait for this presumed federal funding. That's not right for the people that live up there. That's why we're moving forward now. That's why we're having a special meeting, that's why we're going to have another special meeting. And I think you also mentioned, because I went back and forth with you a little bit on this, that as we move forward on this project, we would also have the contractor look to see if there's any other maintenance that would need to happen in that area while they're up there.
Yeah. What we probably do is we'd have our engineer take a look. Whether we did it as a change order to the project or we just did it ourselves with another contractor, that kind of remains to be seen. We definitely wouldn't put it into the bid pack since the bid pack is.
Right. Because then they'll, they'll pack more into there. So, I think, I think if we go along this path of rejecting the bids and rebidding it, I think we definitely need to also prepare for what I think is unlikely, the unlikely event of not getting any bidders and have at our next meeting that contingency discussed as well. I mean, I don't, I don't think any of us want to wait for this federal funding that I don't believe is going to happen and working with Caltrans, we'd be here two years later probably on that. So, thank you for this work and also answering all the questions that I know I had and some others had so we could make it clear that we still are going to get this done before the rainy season unless it really happens November 1. But, we still have plans to move this forward very quickly.
Mayor? One other question. And I guess it's through Garrett more over his head to the community. We would like to know how to keep you best informed of this. And I don't know if everybody from the street is up here at the moment. Maybe you can select one of you. That would be the conduit of information and you could check in by email with Garrett as the weeks roll along and then you could disseminate that information back to everybody. Because I know the one thing that breeds unhappiness is just not being up to date on what's going on. So, if we could just have a point of contact with somebody who's willing to maybe create a nice little email chain and keep folks informed, that would be very helpful.
I think, Garrett, also, don't you have a email list of people on Forest Avenue? And if not, we definitely should have that.
I don't believe we really do like we do for some of the other areas. I think, you know, we would just use next door, but I think email lists would be great.
Well, okay. But I think David's point is well taken. I thought you had an email list, but anyway, I guess you want to open it up to the public.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I'd like to comment too, but go ahead.
Yeah. Just to say, anyone, maybe anyone who wants to be informed could email Garrett, GToy@TownofFairfax is also on the website.
I think, as we move through that, I think it'd be better, maybe we include Michelle. I get so many emails, it's, all due respect, I miss a lot of emails, it goes into spam. I just not, I don't respond timely enough, I think, for the neighborhood.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's, yeah, I'm sure they do. But, yeah, I don't really have any clarifying questions, except that, I mean, we heard about, you know, additional slide stuff that was going on last time. And I guess, when I privately ask you this, but I should probably ask in public here, you know, a lot of that was down on the property below and, you know, something relative to the creek and, you know, perhaps it's in the same area but unrelated to this slide? Is that true?
I think it's difficult to say. You would have to talk to the geotech and our engineer, but in essence, it's private property, the lower portion of the slope. I suppose if that individual were to do his own retaining wall and prevent the scour at the bottom, if there's the creek down there, then obviously that would help, but that's well outside the scope of this project. And we believe our repairs are more insufficient to repair that road.
Yeah. I mean, I agree that's probably outside of the scope, but if the engineer is there looking at everything, you know, that might be helpful to the neighbors there since it was brought up as an issue here. Yeah. I myself, I think it's important for the safety of the neighborhood and, you know, especially we're going into these storms and it's unfortunate, the state and federal bureaucracy is what it is, but I, we've got to get this fixed. That's my personal opinion, but I would like to open it up to the public if people would like to comment on this. Please come up to the podium. We got our three-minute timer going here, so. Great. Yeah.
Can you press the button, please?
Oh, please, press the button on the bottom of the microphone stand. Thank you.
Okay. So, first of all, thank you, John, for mentioning what I brought up at the last meeting about the slide, how we are focusing our attention on the road. And I'm happy to hear that we are going to perhaps take a step back, but I think we need to take a step back, not just in design, but I think we need to rethink actually what is happening here. The town does have exposure and liability. The three experts have told me personally, I had a soils engineer out there that explained to me that the slide was caused by the cut in the road. And I had the geologist for Miller Pacific that was doing the drilling at the time for the town tell me exactly the same thing. And I have just retained an attorney, Alan Mayer, who is 42 years of experience in landslides in Marin County. And he also says that the road is responsible for the slide. Now, I know that Fairfax has not had a soils engineer check out that slide at all. So, what I heard earlier is that, oh, maybe there was some parking addition that was made that put some weight on the road. So, these were my neighbors before Stacy lived across the street and up the hill. Two senior citizens built a little side retaining wall so that they could park their car there. And I, you know, brought them water, I said, hey, you know, Linda, how you guys going, doing? So, a couple of senior citizens built this. So, that's not responsible for the road failure. And if you take a look at it, which I hope that you've all been out there and used your own eyes to look at this, then the, the major break in the road is closer to my house, by the way, Gina Farr, 336 Forest Avenue. The major, where the road, it's about a, over a foot thick in some places, is almost up in the air here and it's closer to my house. So, where you see this little 345 painted on the tree down there, that's where they built this little side thing. So, I know that the town has told me that, oh, there was just all this weight from that thing that was built there. That is absolutely, it defies common sense that anyone would believe that or even repeat that. So, I think we need a soils engineer to really, really take a look at the slide because I will hold the town responsible for any damages that happen to my property. Now, this is my hometown. I don't want to have a lawyer. I mean, this is like, in my worst nightmare, I could not imagine having to do this. But I've got a lot of money involved in my home and I also have a, I have bought property down on the creek and that is a wildlife sanctuary down there that I have set aside for wildlife. I am very involved in the ecology of the area. So, to say that it is all private property, well, I haven't seen that there's been any soils report done on that slide. So, from what I've been told by three experts, it is the road and it is the town's responsibility. So, please, please, get somebody out there right now, if you're going to reject this bid, rethink this whole thing. Take a look at the entire impact and the responsibility and also, before you build retaining walls and put some sort of barrier in the road, if you need to fix, do something to that slide to hold it, you're going to build a big barrier that's going to cost more money to go up and over the barrier to try and do something to make sure that it's safe and that it is stabilized. So, anyway, you know, you know how I feel, there's, I have a, it's there looming over me. Another point I want to make is as long as you may be rethinking this, there's about seven feet of the roadway that goes above my property that has been completely disregarded. The weight of this road, which is so, so heavy, it's been just rotting and moving and it's pulling and twisting the roadway above my property and creating more of a gap. It is compromising a roadway that was not a problem before. And I have said in my many visits to Town Hall that that thing needs to be cut and stabilized, otherwise you're going to end up with more money you have to spend. So, I don't think we're doing this in a prudent way and I look forward to, one last thing. If you want to write something up and you want someone to be someone in the neighborhood, my fence is about 100 and, it's like 180, 120 feet, 150 feet long. Everybody walks by my property. We can put notices about what's going on with the road on my fence and I'm glad to tell all my neighbors for the latest update. I think we do need to absolutely be low-tech as well so we make sure that we are communicating. Because I really do think, as you said, David, that it does make a difference. It really does. Thank you.
Okay. Can I just ask you a clarifying question?
Yeah.
This seven feet of roadway above your property, this is, where is that in relation to this failed?
So.
Section?
So, okay. So, the, my fence, my fence goes this way and I have built with my own money a curb. So, if you were to go and lay eyes on it, you'd see the curb takes about a 30-degree angle. And so, your design proposes to stop the repair right there at the corner of my, of my curb. And from that corner of the curb, if you measure seven feet back east on Forest Avenue, you can see how the road is being kind of pushed and kind of twisted and kind of opened because of the weight of the road right here, which is right, is the worst part of the weight of the road.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Gina, just to clarify.
Sure.
Is your, your house is on the same side of the street as the slide?
Yes.
And it's closer to San Anselmo than Fairfax than the slide is? It's like going towards San Anselmo?
No. It's, it's right, it's, the actual slide goes, does not go towards, I don't understand the question.
No. You're on the San Anselmo side to the east of the slide.
Is your house? Is your house? Is that house is closer to San Anselmo?
My, my house is on the San Anselmo side of the slide.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Correct.
I just wanted to get oriented.
It's the, it's really the last house.
Right.
Before, if you're traveling towards town.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi. Stacy Colto, 345 Forest. So, I have a couple of things to say, one of which is I have emailed extensively from the moment this has happened and I have gotten very little response, even to the point of my emails not even being read or addressed with responses that were so out of this world as far as not even recognizing who I am, that I was, felt very abandoned by my town. And that sucks. Because the town did not submit their proposal for assistance to the right corporate, or to the right, to FEMA, they went to FEMA instead of Caltrans, I would hope that you guys would have known where you should have submitted this to. Now, what I'm hearing from you is that you are going to save your $100,000 by cutting my road down so I will not have parking in front of my house anymore, which will essentially cut my own property value down by at least 100, if not 200,000 dollars of my tiny little house that I scrimped and saved. by at least a hundred, if not $200,000 of my tiny little house that I scrimpin' save and work sixty-five hours a week to support my single self with my daughter. Now, you're gonna take my retirement money, hopefully, if I live that long, and save yourself some money. That feels real bad to me. It feels really bad to me. I've also seen shifts in my own property with my own retaining walls. I have emailed Garrett, I mean Garrett. I have emailed Mark. I've said, please come and look at this. Yeah, it's, it's not a problem. No, things aren't moving. I called you guys up four years ago when the street started to crack and I said, this is a problem. This, nope, it's not our property. It's not our problem. I feel really upset. And I absolutely am gonna throw a holy fit if you cut that street down and eliminate my parking and make my value of my house go down by that. I fought too hard to stay here and keep that house. So I don't know what I need to do. I, I feel like I need, I don't want to just be told that's what's gonna happen to me and my life. That's pretty much it.
Yeah. Well, I can understand definitely. And I think we need to basically take that all into account when we figure out what to do. I mean, there's, there's also the fact that the road's not open. And I've heard a lot of stuff from other people and we're trying to respond to opening the road, so.
Yeah, I'm definitely not happy the road's not open either. It's not a luxury to me to have the road closed and have to drive around to get to the good earth and then drive back around and then go up. But if there's a possibility for this road to get shored up enough to get through rainy season, to get the money from Caltrans to build the road properly so that I don't lose my investment of my life, that would be great for me. And I am the one, Gina and I are the ones that have been sitting on this since February. And it doesn't feel good to go to your house every day and look at that and worry and stay up at night when it's still raining. I don't want to wind up with a big financial loss at the end of the day on this. I don't want to. And I'm, I'm not gonna be happy if that happens.
Just to, just to clarify, your house is across the street from the slide?
Right in back of the slide.
And the parking that you're talking about is, is, these parking spaces were the ones across the street?
Correct.
That were lost when the slide happened?
Correct.
Okay.
Stacy, are they your only parking places?
They are. So, and in my neighborhood, and I know this isn't technically legal, but everybody up in the hill has their own reserved parking spots in front of their own houses. So if I was to lose this parking, I would have to park somewhere down on Creek and/or Dominga and walk up to my house. You tell me when I go to sell my house, somebody's gonna say, I'd like to walk five blocks to get to this house and then walk up the seventy stairs to the front door. Sure, I'll give you $750,000 for that. It's not gonna happen. And my whole life will be inconvenienced because then I'll be walking six blocks to get to my own home that I pay a lot of, lot of property tax every year or two.
I'll get it. Okay.
Hi, I'm Jill. I'm 275 Forest Avenue. I can speak, I actually look out here and I wish you guys could see the representation of the people this is actually affecting because it probably affects sixty to seventy homes. And I feel bad that not more of our neighbors showed up tonight. I think I'd like to speak to, because these couples actually have immediate danger. But it is an immediate danger for the rest of us as well. And one of the things I want to talk about a little bit is the fact that Forest Avenue is very narrow and tree-lined. And so should there be a fire, an earthquake, or anything like that, that street can't really sustain that many houses getting out one exit. And you really need to drive it to see that. But there's no way if something, a catastrophe should happen, that we could all get out. So that's really my big concern. Another thing that concerns me is what happened a few weeks ago, which is someone was doing construction on their house. It happens all the time. There's tons of old houses on that street. And they needed to block off the street. Well, normally, we can get out the other way. But in this case, I called the police because I couldn't get out. And they said, well, you're gonna have to not get out of your house for three hours. So this, this can't sustain either. You know, we need another way out. So that's all I really have to say, but.
Can I just make two comments to your thing? Until we correct this, and we will correct this, there's gonna have to be coordination in the neighborhood. I also live on sort of a small street and then if somebody could block it up. There's gonna have to be that sort of thing where people put maybe on your fence, the, hey, you park your car someplace else because we're gonna have the kind of work. There's gonna have to be neighborhood coordination. But on the other issue is if we have a fire or earthquake or something, please don't get in your car and drive. You're gonna have to exit with, you know, on foot. The roads, I'm telling you now, will be beyond clogged. And it will be Oakland. So, so please, just in the back of your mind, say, ah, this is a walking situation, so.
Right. And I, I do, just as someone who's lived here for fourteen years, one of the other houses we were considering buying was at the very end of Cascade. And one of the main reasons we didn't buy that house is because it was at the very end of a very long road. And I was afraid of, you know, in a disaster situation. And now we find ourselves at the very end of a very, very long road. And, and yet, this road is more tree-lined and more, you know, narrower. And, yeah, so it's, it is a pressing matter. And it's also worth noting that we walk that street all the time. Everyone here does. And there's cracks that are very similar to the one that was there before, all along Forest Avenue. So should another rainy season happen, should there be another slide, there was a slide a couple of years back on, you know, closer down to Lansdale Station. If that should happen, then we're gonna be trapped. So, yeah, hopefully, it can get fixed quickly.
Yeah, it's unfortunate. I mean, we all love Fairfax and we love living here. But unfortunately, it's, as nice as it is, it's got that situation all over, like Cascade. It's, you know, the people have to work together as neighbors to make it so we can all live here, so.
Right.
Hello, Barbara Petty, 272 Forest Avenue, as you know. Sorry, I have a little cold. I just wanted to, a couple of things. One is I think that the town should restore the road back to its original state. We know that parking is a really big priority for the town. In fact, if you have a big reconstruction of your home, you have to put in more parking. So taking away the parking, I don't think is a good solution. And also, if we're gonna lose the possibility of getting a reimbursement because we reduce the scope of it, I don't know that that's a great idea unless I misunderstood what you said. So if it's possible that we just don't like the bid that we got and we could rebid it for this, I don't know if that's possible. If you can just say, we're rejecting this bid, we're putting it back out again in the hopes that we get something that we like. And maybe this other company will get theirs in on time. I think that would be great. And I just want to reiterate what Jill said. It's very scary to us knowing that there was a slide on the other side of us not very long ago. And if that happens again, we are totally screwed. I mean, we won't be able to get in and out. So I'm really appreciative that you guys are looking to really get this done before the rainy season. So thank you for any help that you can give us.
Hey, Barbara, just to clarify, and this is a, a point of not no significance, but it's of annoying significance. Usually, the repairs I just would be funded by FEMA, a mismanaged, poor stepchild of the federal government that finds every unique ways not to meet the obligations of its charter. We don't even have that here. Because of the nuances of nonsense, we end up having to go to the federal highway, whatever, other organization, part of the federal government to, to seek funding under this thing. And for us, this is, I think, uncharted territory. I don't recall this, having to go in this alternative direction. And that's why we're in this sort of crazy bond, bind of wanting to do the work immediately. But my God, I mean, $400,000 for us is, as you know, more than anybody.
Right. I understand that. I mean, I know when the floods happened, there was a lot of work done. You actually hired somebody specifically to work with FEMA. So I don't know if that's just like not.
It doesn't qualify.
We never got reimbursed for that. And a couple of things, just one thing to clarify is it wasn't a screw-up on staff's part going to FEMA. FEMA actually thought at first that it was one of their projects. But because for some reason Forrest is on some old federal highway map, that's why it got kicked back. So not to, I mean.
It's not an excuse. It's a fact.
That's what happened. And it delayed us considerably because we thought we'd be working with FEMA.
Right.
And Garrett has developed a good relationship with them. The old flood money was never reimbursed.
Okay.
So now I think we can get reimbursed through FEMA for other projects, but this one.
Okay, so maybe you can trade it off.
This one probably would not happen.
But if, if, sorry. I'm sorry, Barbara. I'm just, around this, around, in terms of this FHA money, what are the, what have you heard of the chances? Because waiting for that funding means delaying this. And if the chances are slim, then that's going to help us decide how we're going to move forward.
Actually, Caltrans staff that we're working with has never worked with this program before. For them, just a little history, we started with FEMA. FEMA thought it was eligible. Turns out, it's on some classification map. No one ever knew why it's on there, but it's on there. And because it's on there, it goes under Federal Highway Administration. Caltrans had to scramble administering the Emergency Relief Fund, which is what you apply under. And everybody had to meet the same deadline all at the same time. So FEMA got its hundreds of applications, or however many, all at the same time. And what's going on is they're trying to huddle to figure out how much money is truly available and how they can allocate. All I know is if we, now, no one cares about this. And I get it. It's a bureaucracy. We, people think we're too much red tape. But in the federal government, there's a difference between emergency protective repair and permanent repair. And so while you might make an argument, it's an emergency because the road's closed and emergency vehicle's got a detour or do whatever. Trust me, we made that argument. But according to FEMA, what we're doing is considered a permanent repair. So you have to go through the normal process. Go through the normal process with Caltrans.
Are you sure you're saying FEMA? Or you mean?
Well, it's FEMA and it's the same thing.
For this federal highway money?
What I'm saying is the characterization for all the programs is the same thing when it comes to emergency repair and permanent repair. Very distinct definitions. So while you try to make an argument, hey, I need to repair this road, use example, Tamil Pius. They only have one way in. No one can go through. No emergency vehicles, nobody. If there's a fire emergency, fire has to haul seven hundred, nine hundred feet of hose to get to the home. So we made all these arguments to FEMA pretty clear. Pretty clear, they said, I know it's not a good policy or a regulation, but it is, that's it. Emergency and permanent. That's permanent. It's not like you're gonna take it out and redo it. So if it stays permanent, that's considered permanent. So that's, that's what we're dealing with. And when it's permanent, you go through the regular process. And with Caltrans, the regular process is very stepped. We've done this with the bridge projects, done this with numerous projects. And it will take several months, or it'll be to the point where you really couldn't do the work anyway because it's rainy season. And you can't do that work during rainy season. It would just make things worse. So that's, that's the difficulty when it comes to this stuff. Now, I do apologize. Have we not informed people better? Did I send Stacy an email that she was someone else? Yes, I apologize. Completely my fault. No excuses. But we are trying to try to do the project initially to try to get reimbursed. No one thought it would take this long. And the next report that we have is a status update on the FEMA projects of where we're at. And trust me, that's taken a long time. But you have to follow steps. Otherwise, you will not get reimbursed. And moving forward with the project, it's a trade-off of, do you want to do that now or wait? It's not clear to me. And it sounds like some people, if you can get the full-size road and dress certain things, might say, let's wait. Because as we go through the Caltrans process, they, their engineers look at everything we do. Their engineers may say, okay, well, now you need to do X, Y, and Z, da-da-da, your project costs go up, this goes up. That's okay. As long as they have the pot of money, they can, they can always allocate that. So that's, that's the difficulty that we're going through right now.
But I've worked with Caltrans quite a bit when I worked in the state doing big projects. And I think you're being optimistic, even thinking you could do it next year. I think particularly because they haven't worked with this kind of funding at all, I think we'd possibly looking at two years. And I don't think that's acceptable. That's why we're trying to rush. And I know for some people sitting here, that's not what they want to hear. But I think it's untenable for folks not to be able to get out. And I think we all feel that way. So thanks, Barbara, for your comments.
Sure. And also, if Michelle wants to email me, I can get an email group together if you want her to do it that way.
I think that'd be great.
You forget one thing. In terms of the blocked roadways, we're not issuing permits anymore. For anyone that's gonna do work, that's gonna block the roadway.
I have a question, which is just, and this is, again, none of us, no one here on the panel, no one here wants to hear that it could take another year. But I think if that's the case, like I just heard you say, sandbagging or whatever. But I don't know how many of you have gone up there and taken a look. I don't think there's any way in hell you could sandbag that, that road closure. So it might actually, I might just suggest that someone go take a look and really look at the fact that if there is no way that it's gonna happen this year, how are, how Stacy, how are these people are gonna stay safe? Is, would be a good question. Because it's not, it's not really a sandbag-able situation, I don't think.
I think what I'm saying that is what we do is we hire an engineering firm to evaluate and do the best we can. That's just the typical process that, that would happen.
Yes. Yeah. Hi, Bill Scholes, 301 Forest Ave. Hi, neighbors. I feel for every, every one of you. And, and I can attest, there's probably fifty other people that either didn't see the notice that would probably be here and share their opinion. I'm just gonna build on what everyone else said. I'm not gonna try to be redundant here. First question, for the plans that were, the engineering plans that were generated, was there or was there not a soil test done as part of those plans?
We did soil testing. That's a requirement for any of the federal funding.
Okay, I just said.
Right. I think what Mrs. Farr is referring to is maybe something a little different. I do know we had Miller Pacific look at different things. But to answer your base question, we did soil tests as required for the road.
But for peering, for the retaining wall?
Right, determine what we need to do.
Okay, all right. Are it, are those plans and the tests, when there are, is that public record?
Actually, I don't know if we actually put it online. But you're, sure, we, well, to email it would be like twenty-five megabytes. It's a huge file.
Can we post it on the website?
Yeah.
I know the website is full of a lot of stuff.
You just want to see the plans or the plans and specs?
Sure, all the above. I, actually, the soil, the soil test is, I mean, we all, we all live on that west side of the hill.
We'll post the plans and specs, the soil test results, pouring tests are on pages of the plans and specs.
I'd say anything. And if anybody has an interest, they can look through it and take, take what they, what they want. So on the rebid, I don't have any issue with reject all bids and go back out. And, but my question is, what if the bids come in and they're the exact same amount or higher? Are you guys willing to accelerate to, I mean, that's just, I didn't hear that addressed. And if you guys want to comment about that, it'd be interesting to know where you're, where you're.
Are you talking about a higher bid for the less work?
Yeah. I mean, it's, I mean, I loved, by the way, that was great imagery, right? I'm there with my two packages and I'm looking around. And I give you my special number three package because I know that's fifty percent more. I, I just.
It's what happens every time, unfortunately.
Yeah.
It's, it, there's not many contractors who have the ability to do this. And they know each other and they, it's, it's, that's the game that they play, unfortunately.
More contractors living on Forest Ave. That's what I think.
I think, I think what gets to your point is that, as Garrett mentioned before, we would have, we are going to have another special meeting once that bid package is open so that the council can consider further with you how we're gonna proceed.
So David, though, this is the thing, is I think there's a fundamental thing we need to come to here. And that is whether we're gonna look at the twenty-four and protect the parking or the eighteen because that's going to have to be clarified before the bid package goes out. And, and I think that.
I think we should hear from the people that are here before we have that discussion.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Yeah, that is deliberation.
Putting that out.
I'm just teaming them up. That's all.
But before we have, bring it back here for that discussion, I, I think, I will just say that one of the reasons we're, we're moving so quickly, which I know sounds slow for you that have been waiting since February, is that we are really committed to this. And for us to even spend $300,000 on a project with no potential for reimbursement, it's a huge hit to our budget, but we think it's worth it. So in the event that we come up with something higher, I think we'll really have to deliberate on that because we don't want to see you guys continuing. I mean, I see that street. I bike by it all the time. I've gone up there. One of my friends runs up there and has been yelling at me every time he sees me. He doesn't even live there. So I, I think, you know, it's gonna be a fine line. But we really do want to help the situation. And I think once we hear from everybody, then I think we should have the discussion of doing something, you know, the eighteen-foot, which in my mind is a prudent way to go. But I think there may be a possibility of digging out some of those parking spaces, maybe not paving them. There might be some tweener. There might be some tweener kind of thing, but I think we should wait until we hear from everybody.
So that, that, that makes perfect sense. Um, can I, uh, so the, uh, Forest Ave, I mean, from Santa Selma all the way up down as it joins, um, Creek, Blackberry, I mean, it's, it's in bad shape. There are, I mean, that's, that's what you weren't saying, is this, this is, this is the first one that went. Um, good friends with Rudy, and he's the guy who goes up there in patches, and, you know, it's not, it's, it's not in good shape. So, um, and, and it's gonna be a lot of money either way. My question is, you guys talked about getting the road reclassified so that we're talking FEMA next time and that we're not gummed up. I, I mean, I, uh, I get that this is turn of the century and railroads and, you know, and it was, it was a highway to somebody's mind, on somebody's map. This needs to get this, even, even if we do it on our own dime, somebody should be working to get this road reclassified so that it's standard FEMA.
I, I think that's just FEMA's call. They just designate roadways certain characteristics. I don't think we can, you know, do anything to apply to, I don't think designate.
It makes, I, I, but I mean, as I understand the history behind it, the, the history's invalid at this point. And I hate living in, uh, bureaucratic legacy when it's, this road's gonna fail in other places, and are we gonna be... You guys, you guys don't have another threat.
Can I just ask?
I know you don't have another threat.
Excuse me?
Sure.
Um, I don't think FEMA made the call. I think that's because it's on an old federal highway map. I think once we get through this important phase, can we at least explore the possibility of seeing if there's any way to get it reclassified?
Actually, reclassification's rather easy. We tried to convince FEMA, can we just reclassify it now so it'd be under FEMA? They said, no. They said, it's on the map, it's classified as Arterio, I think it is.
But can we...
But in the future, we could take it off, that's fine, but we're, we wanna resolve all this first.
So why not? So let's get...
It sounds like for the purposes of this project, they don't wanna reclassify.
So I think, Bill, that's a great point. Let's get through this, but let's definitely work on that, because you're not the only road that is not in great shape.
It's, it's a no-brainer to reclassify.
So can we definitely put that on the list of things to do?
Yeah, we actually have it on the list. It's just, we're waiting to resolve all this before we do that.
I think that makes sense. Thank you for raising that.
Um, and if you guys just posted to the website, I mean, all of, I, I, and Garrett, I feel for you. I, but all of us probably have giant inboxes with mail that we haven't responded to. Um, uh, but I think if you posted to the website or next door, I mean, and, and, I mean, that seems, it seems to me that most, everybody that I know of that is affected gets, you know, they, they don't participate maybe, but they certainly see it. And you can flag things so that the only next door notification you get is Forest Ave related. And for the, for the neighbors that are most directly affected, I mean, I would, uh, do it right to whatever that means, whatever the plans work out, don't skimp, um, just, I, I mean, I, and I, and I have four or five other neighbors that aren't here that probably kicked me in the shin to say that. I can live with inconvenience, um, but, uh, but I feel for the folks that are most, uh, most affected. And, you know, for, for, for property value and for having the thing be right next to me, because it could be me. I'm, I, you know, John, you've been over to our driveway and Jill that I, we live up.
Sure.
We could be the, the next one. Um, and unfortunately, it's private property, and we will have to pay for that, so, uh, but thanks. Thanks for your time.
Yeah. I, I hear you. I mean, I live on a creek that moved and, yeah, it, in 10 hours, there's, you know, it's in a different place now, and there's a big changes. And, and really, it's bigger than any of us. You know, the weather, you know, whether it's the weather or the economy or FEMA or whatever it is, it's, we can react as best we can, and unfortunately, that's kinda what we're up against. Are there more members of the public, please come forward?
Hi, John Shepherd. I'm not Forest Ave, I'm Tamalpais. But I, I wanted, I can use my time to ask questions as well, is that right? Of y'all? Instead of just comment? Okay.
Because it's not agendized.
So the, the questions I have...
Yeah. Well, Tamalpais is the next thing on the agenda, but feel free to speak to Forrest, yeah.
The questions I have is really is, are these projects, such as Forrest and Tamalpais, being worked on in parallel, or are they worked on in serial? So is there progress being made on both projects?
Depends on who the bidder is, but Garrett, do you wanna address that?
It, it is scheduled on Tamalpais to talk about the next item, but yes, we, engineering firm designs both projects at the same time.
Will there be hearings on, on Tamalpais as well, or? I, I haven't heard anything about that. We've been closed.
Uh, we're actually gonna, we'll actually talk about it next, in terms of the status.
On, at this meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Because I do wanna emphasize that we've been closed the same amount of time. We, we get completely blocked in that, in that road, and, you know, we have no trash service, we have no, uh, pickup for anything. So, uh, there's no access to our houses for anything that's larger than a car, so, um, so thanks.
Say, anybody else wanna comment on the Forrest Ave thing that we're talking about?
This is just a question, which is just that ultimate...
Yeah, you need to speak to the microphone, unfortunately.
I've never been told I need a microphone to speak, huh? Um, just so that I understand, the, the ultimate decision is with you guys. You guys get to decide this, right? Like, it doesn't go to a vote, it doesn't, it's your decision, correct?
Yeah. It's certainly influenced by everybody in this room and all the emails we got and things like that.
Right, but you're gonna decide what happens, right?
Yeah, the next step, sure. So seeing any other further public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment section and bring it back to the council here. And, um, I will, uh, open it up to my fellow council members.
First things, I have to tell my wife I will not be home for dinner. Because we are gonna talk about this for quite a bit of time now.
So, just a question, um, and I know this is something we hadn't talked about, or this wasn't contemplated, but, um, is there a possibility of the area where we lose the three parking spaces of not paving that, but perhaps digging it out? So that they would still be able to use them?
Uh, are you meaning not have 18 feet of pavement?
Right. So you would have 18 feet of pavement, but not 24 feet of pavement. But where we would lose the three parking spaces, can we dig them out if they're covered with mud?
Oh, I think what we're, the current plans are 18 feet of pavement and six foot of shoulder, and that's where you would park them.
So the three parking spaces that will be lost, what is gonna happen to those?
Those would just go away.
Okay. Is there any way to create a soft shoulder there so that without increasing the bid to $400,000?
There, in that section, I don't believe there's any way, because you need to, the whole purpose of retaining walls is to kinda hold the, basically, the, the slope underneath the road in place. There's no room. I, I thought maybe your question was, could we look on Forrest somewhere else to create spaces?
Okay, could we?
Sure.
Because, um, so I know we've encountered the parking issues on other streets in Fairfax where people think the space in front of their house is theirs. And in those situations, we've told those people they need to work it out. There is no rule on that. But if it's possible to do something where, um, if we go forward with the 18 feet, which frankly, I'm supportive of to save us $100,000, uh, which is a huge chunk of our budget. But if it's possible to look for other areas to create two or three additional parking spaces, um...
There isn't, there isn't anywhere near my house to do that.
Okay.
Be careful. I mean, where am I, Stacy?
Stacy, so you've already spoken, and so we've closed the public comments, so thank you for bringing that up. But one thing, when we're filming, people have to speak at the mic. But I think, um, it's not a perfect situation, but at least if we can try to recover some parking spaces somewhere, that would be helpful.
Yeah. I mean, it, and it's the case everywhere with parking. People may put up signs that say, oh, parking for this address only, or whatever. But basically, parking along a public right-of-way is not private parking. And basically, people can put up all the signs they want, and there are a few cases where, you know, somebody has excavated into their own property and they put up their own retaining wall, and then, yes, then that's on their property. But generally speaking, parking along a public right-of-way is public parking. And it's, it can't be claimed by one individual.
Is there any way to reconfigure the way the road is, the, the shoulder is allocated on either side, without taking it to 18, but in that place where there is absolutely nowhere for her to park, where she is now, now parking, is there a way to jog it somehow? Keep one side with that extra three on the one side and then move it back to...
I think if you're saying, if you're saying keep 18 feet of pavement on that existing section and see if you can find another space in that section, I would say, I don't believe it's possible unless you're gonna cut into the hillside or make a section bigger, or have your pavement be a lot smaller. But 18 really is probably what you want, is so two cars get past. If you start squeezing it down to 15 or 14, you've started to almost create a one-lane effect.
Okay. And is it crazy to think about having most of it be 18 in one area where it bulbs a little bit to allow for a resident who will no longer have any parking?
So in other words, one section of the road would be wider than the other. Uh, I'd have to ask the engineers without cost, because what you'd be asking is, you'd be, it sounds like you'd be going like this with a four-foot wall, then you'd have a bigger wall sticking out and...
You know, I'm definitely not an engineer, but I, I'm just trying to, I, I can't imagine another way that we could do it if we took it to 18. I, I feel for you in thinking, hey, if I had to park, you know, 10 houses away where we could carve out one spot, that would really not, that would suck. So I'm just wondering if, if we might explore that.
I, I can ask the question, maybe there's some other alternatives. I, I think in this section, to do that would probably make it really expensive, but maybe outside the 100 linear feet of the road, maybe there's another section where you could do something like that, it'd be less costly.
I think I have to agree entirely with Renee, because although John is, is correct about the right-of-way, things become custom in a community. And the custom on this road is for her and her house to have a place to park. So somehow, it seems to me, we're going to have to accommodate this, otherwise we've taken, as Stacy pointed out, a big chunk of the equity out of her house. And it just doesn't seem right. Because once this passes from our lips in our vote, that community's gonna be stuck with this decision. So to the extent that you and the engineers can find some accommodation somewhere that's reasonable, um, that would be a task I would ask you to undertake.
Just, just to point out, let's be clear, that we're looking to add a space back in that area. That space isn't dedicated to any one home. However the neighbors want to consider that, then that's completely fine.
And I think that's an important point, because we would be setting a precedent. For example, we have another area in town where people have been arguing this point, and we cannot be creating individualized parking spaces where none exist. I think, I think it's well worth it to see if we can find a way to accommodate a parking spot, but we are not dedicating that parking spot to Stacy as much as we'd like to.
But, you know...
She would have to work that out with her neighbor.
Right. But given that, it sounds like that's a possibility. But what the difference is in this situation, Barbara, is that she has an existing parking place that was taken out. And we would be rendering her with nothing. So it's different than someone else coming in and saying, hey, I'd really like a parking place in front of my house. If, that's my take.
This, this, this situation is quite similar that we're dealing with, where somebody has said that a parking space is theirs, that has routinely been theirs. So it is a similar situation, and I think we have to be concerned about that. But I think to the extent we can accommodate it without saying we're building it for Stacy in particular, I think we should try to do that.
I, I agree. I mean, I, I think also, uh, yeah, I mean, looking at what you're calling emergency measures, and it's basically tarp and sandbags, and I think it's the sandbags are holding the tarp down. Is that what you're talking about with sandbags? No engineer likes to sign off on something like that, but, you know, I, I think we've gotta get an opinion of how realistic that is to do. Because, I mean, there are advantages to doing that, you know? I mean, when I came into here, I was definitely...
I'm not sure what you're referring to. What Garrett was talking about in the event, for some reason, we couldn't move forward with this, that we would look at stabilization measures. Are you talking about something with us moving forward?
That's what I'm talking about, is stabilization so that we can get through this winter. I mean, if there is an opinion from an engineer that there is something that we can do short of, you know...
I guess I just...
Permanently changing this road to being 18 feet during that section.
But I'm telling you, I have experience working with Caltrans.
So do I. And they are insufferable. They, they go on for years.
That's what I mean, is that you're not looking at doing this next year. I think you're, so it's...
Yeah, I think it's optimistic.
I don't think we should...
Frankly, also, my experience with Caltrans, I think next year is also optimistic.
But so, I, I think we should really try to find a way to move forward. Now, we heard from several people, um, that they want this done now. We've heard from a couple people who'd rather we wait. I think we'd be waiting a few years. I don't think we'd be waiting one year. And so I think we have to go into it realistically and not look for...
Folks, we might be waiting for Godot. I mean, there's, we have, we could wait, right? And not have it, and not get it. There's a very strong possibility.
I mean, there's that too. So I think we ought to be talking about trying to move forward as quickly as possible. How do we do that? I've heard some ideas about trying to accommodate at least one parking space, moving forward with the rebid with that idea in mind. Is that what we're talking about? I mean, that makes sense to me.
So Garrett, what you're looking for the following, if I understand it, from us, which would be, um, you want us to consider rejecting this bid, you want us to consider giving you direction on the 18 versus the 24-foot wide road. Is there anything else that you would like us to focus on and give direction?
No, that, that'd be sufficient, uh, with the understanding that we'll need a special council meeting, because we'll probably do the minimum bid period of two weeks.
Okay. And it, well, I guess to clarify what I was asking for before, is, is it possible to get from this engineer, this middle path thing, where we are trying to preserve the integrity of that road and seeing if we can jump through these bureaucratic hoops and get there?
So what we would do, off the top of my head, is we would talk to the engineer about trying to accommodate or design for one space. So assuming that's a possibility somewhere up there, then I would propose that when we do the bid pack, we would bid, we would do a bid, bid package based on 18-foot road with the parking space option as a bid alternate. And then we'd have to figure out how we bid it. But that way, then the council could decide whether to include it or not include it. Gets a little tricky on the bid alternate things, doesn't mean you'll necessarily save any money, because there's also a game with doing that too. But that being said, we'd figure out something, if that sounds like that's what the council would like us to pursue.
Okay. I mean, I think some of the council was asking for that, but I was asking for something different, which is, what are the, you know, what are the chances of our, our emergency measures of preserving this road in its current condition?
To answer your question, yes, we do that during the storm. During the storm, for the slide back here and all the slides, we call out the geotech engineer, they evaluate it on the site, and they tell us what we need to do for emergency protective measures, whether cheating, sandbagging, doing some other things.
But I don't understand why we would be doing that, unless a bid comes in that's outrageously higher than what we have right now. outrageously higher than what we have right now. We wouldn't be doing that.
No, I think, but that's what I asked when we started this, is that in case something, I think one of our members of the community said, what happens?
Yes.
And so the idea is to have a contingency plan in the worst-case scenario that we get in no bids or we get in bids that are five hundred thousand dollars or something, that we have that contingency plan at that special meeting so that we're not then going, go back and do that and calling people back again.
But in terms of the bid situation, we're looking at a bid for an eighteen-foot roadway and an alternate bid for that, making a provision for that one parking place, right?
Okay, that's correct.
And then otherwise, it's studying, the engineer's studying...
Yeah, and can we also, I mean, this, I get that, this is a different engineer that we're talking to with the emergency situation.
It's the same engineer. All you're asking is, when we come to the meeting, can we have a backup plan if you want to do something different, not award a bid, what it would cost to stabilize the bank and how efficient would that work? How effective that would be?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think that needs to be part of the question.
I don't suppose you have a date in mind for the special meeting?
Okay, if I had to guess, design, redesign will take one, two weeks at the most. We have to notice the bid in the papers, a two-week bid period. We're looking at, I would say, mid-September for a special meeting, so maybe the third week of September or so would probably work. That's what I'm guessing.
Well, not the most religious guy in the world, but I do notice that the Thursday, the 21st, on my calendar notes, Rosh Hashanah, and so Wednesday, the 20th, would put us potentially on air of Rosh Hashanah. And I know that that would be inappropriate to hold a meeting on that evening.
So possibly Tuesday, the 19th, we don't have to go for Wednesday.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you do that, just do it early. Garrett, maybe we want to think, and I know people have jobs and stuff like that, we may want to think about starting a meeting a little bit earlier, five o'clock, five-thirty sort of, sort of thing.
So I, I have some questions and comments. Garrett, Gina raised an issue about a section a little bit to the east of the slide that is of concern. I, I would really like to have that looked at. And I'm also concerned about potential, you know, liability, the bigger picture to, I think Stacy's house, you know, I, I think we should have someone look into whether there's a larger global problem of instability at that location. That would be beyond the scope of fixing this road, but I think it's something we should look at kind of long-term because, you know, I, I've ridden my bike by there several times on my way to work and it just, it's an alarming thing to look at. It, it just intuitively doesn't look real stable. So, you know, I, I share people's concerns that, you know, we really need to look at the totality of the stability of that, that area and make sure that we're not, you know, neglecting to shore up what's, what's our responsibility to shore up.
I think, let's be clear again, and with all due respect to everyone, I don't think the town is assuming any liability at this point for anything that we're talking about here. I know what the neighbors and residents of state, but I want to be clear, as a town, we're not advocating that we're assuming any liability. That being said, I don't have a problem asking Miller Pacific or a geotech engineer go out and explore. We won't have to spend money if we have to do soil tests and it sounds like the council is saying that's fine to go ahead and spend some money on a soil test in that slide area, if I understand correctly.
I'm going to go one step further, Garrett, which is if, this is not a nice thing to say, but if we go out and we do soil testing and we find out stuff and that becomes a public record, then this council will be deciding exactly which taxes we're going to start raising for the millions of dollars it's going to cost to start shoring up all of these roads on all of those hillsides that are all getting saturated with incredible, how did Al Gore put it in the movie, rain dumps, rain bombs, as he put it. And so the more knowledge we acquire, however thoughtful and considerate we are to attend to that, we will then be putting on the record potential liability down the road.
Well, I, I would say for this particular issue that's in front of us, let's, let's be prudent, let's make sure that we're, our repair that we're doing isn't going to, you know, further make things, make things worse and that, you know, we're not destabilizing the hill further. So that's a concern. The, it's a tricky issue about the parking. I, I mean, I, I just lost a parking space in front of my house because a neighbor is building a property, developing a property and they put a, they deemed to put a fire cutout or a fire turnaround in front of my property, so I lost a parking space because of that. So I, I sympathize with you, Stacy, in terms of the parking thing. I am a little, just having seen that stretcher road, I don't know that there would be room to really sort of engineer a cutout like that that wouldn't be, you know, a cost approaching the, the bid we have in front of us. There is a risk that, you know, if we reject this bid and open it up, we could just kind of find ourselves being gouged in a way. I mean, in some ways, sort of the more prudent thing, if you want to preserve the parking, would be to accept this bid even though it's, you know, it is a hundred forty thousand dollars more than we anticipated. We're in a, a difficult situation where, you know, the contractor's bidding on it, it, it's a bidder's market right now because they're all busy, they don't need to work. And so it's a risk that we face going forward that we may not get a suitable bid. So in a way, you know, we have a bird in the hand that's more expensive, but it is, it is a big chunk of our budget. It's three percent or more of our budget this year. So it's a, it's a tough conundrum. So, you know, just realize if we do go forward with submitting or, you know, putting out for new bids, including an alternate bid to explore the possibility of the parking thing, we may not find contractors willing to bid the way that we hope they are. So that's just something, a bit of caution for everyone to consider as we go forward today. And for folks too that live on Forest Avenue, it's, it's, you know, it's somewhat uncharted territory. We may not be able to get a bid in time to do the repairs before this winter.
But that's not true because I think we already have one, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Peter, but we already have one bidder that was late. And I think what Garrett described was the idea of people sitting there with two envelopes and when they're the only one, they give you the high one. We found with rebidding the end of the bike spine that we came in with a much more reasonable number. So I think the likelihood of us not getting any bidders...
But with a bike spine, what we did was we waited, we waited six months. We don't have that for Liberty here.
Yeah, we did, we waited until the spring when it's not as hungry.
But there's also the point of it's getting close to the end of the season. So some of these folks are going to start needing work. I, I don't think that we're not going to get any bids. I think there's a possibility of getting just as high bids and then we take that on as we can. But I think we need to make a decision.
Sure, I, I do too. I just, you know, that's just one of the, I, I generally kind of support going in this direction that people are talking about, but that's a potential consequence. So just, I, I just want to put that out now before we make our vote.
Okay, Renee? No, I was asking for more...
No, I mean, I, I think what I'm hearing is we have a lot of questions around it, but we're not going to know until we go out with this bid and this alternate bid and bring it back to us in September, what it is we're going to do. I think all of us would like to have some form of that happen, if I'm hearing correctly. So I would propose that we move in that direction. I don't know if anyone's ready to make a motion to do that.
All right, no further deliberation here? Yeah, I'd love to entertain a motion.
Okay, so I would have to make a motion to, what do we have on here in terms of, we're just...
If I, I think what you're asking is you would make a motion to authorize staff to redesign the road to eighteen feet with the bid alternate of including some kind of accommodation for at least one parking space. We'll have to discuss it with the engineer to be this, to go ahead and bid out the pro, you don't need that part, but in essence, we're going to go, just with the redesign, that's the authority with the bid alternate. I think that's all we need, but understanding is we'll need a special council meeting to consider the award of bids whenever that is.
And just, just to clarify, what we're talking about are two bids, or one's a regular bid, one's an alternate. One would be for just a straight eighteen-foot wide with a four-foot retaining wall. And then one would be in the alternate, a bid to accommodate a, a parking space. I don't know how, if, how much our resolution has to describe that alternate bid, but...
You don't have to go into detail because I, I know exactly what you mean.
So for my clarity and hopefully the public's clarity, if that comes back and the alternate bid is too high, we still have the opportunity to bring this back at the next special meeting, discuss it, hear more from you all and start over or go forward.
I think I need to, I need to play...
You're going to start running out of weather window.
I thought the motion was to reject bids, go out for bid. One bid is the eighteen-foot pavement. There would also be an alternate idea on top of that that they could bid on that would include that additional parking space, is that correct?
That's correct, but just to be clear, it's not a separate bid for that parking space.
Just an augment?
It's just an alternated part of the overall bid pack. And then what happens is for the council, your lowest responsible bidder would be, you would pick who gives you the lowest base bid. But that being said, if the lowest base bid may have the highest alternate, but you don't get to pick and choose, you award based on that and then you could choose to do the alternate and it could be higher than base bid plus the alternate. This, it, that's just how public billing works, gets very confusing. And for the bike spine, we did a similar, I think it was the bike spine, that we did a similar bid alternate type approach.
Okay, can you explain that again, please, slowly, that, how that would work?
Sure, so your base bid, okay, terminology is base bid is what they're putting a proposal together for and that's eighteen feet of pavement, what they're retaining while however it has to be. Your bid alternate is just one component, an additional thing in the bid pack that says, oh, by the way, if the council would like, we also want bid on this. That this would be a design to add that parking space somewhere, whatever that would be. And so what happens is your bid is awarded the lowest responsibility based on your base bid, not both together. And so what happens is your base bid could be a hundred thousand dollars, you go, great. Your alternate could be a hundred thousand dollars. So it's two hundred thousand dollars. Somebody else might have put in a bid that the base bid is one fifty, but the alternate's twenty-five, their total is one seventy-five. But you award to has, whoever has the lowest base bid.
Base bid, right.
Or you could do it the other way around. I think in this case, you probably want to do award on the lowest base bid and then consider the alternate.
Right, right, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's just a way that contractor, I don't know if the public can understand that or not, but this is a way that contractors use to skew that project, process in their favor. The person bidding less for the basic thing is going to get the job even though they're going to get more money out of it.
Well, but you may decide that you're not going to pay for the alternate.
Yeah.
Right.
So we can decide that.
So do you have enough direction to move forward on that?
I, I am entertaining a motion, I, I'd love to entertain a motion.
All right, so the motion is reject bids.
To adopt a resolution rejecting bids.
Adopt the resolution rejecting all bids and then move forward with a new bid for the eighteen feet with an alternate bid on top of that for the additional parking.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Is that a motion?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. So, great. That is, you know, so we'll go out to bid now, we'll solicit this, we'll get some engineering stuff and we'll come back at a special meeting next time around. I mean, basically, they won't be in time for the September meeting.
It's like sometime around September 19th.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right, so the next thing on the agenda is to receive the town manager's oral report on disaster recovery process regarding winter storm damage, which basically is Tamalpais and Madrone Road, right? That's it?
Well, there's, there's a little more.
There's more than that even, so, okay.
So here's kind of the, the update and I think I can answer the household's question on Tamalpais, but, so how it works with FEMA, you get the storms January and February. FEMA declared federal disaster, I believe, in March for January and April maybe for the February storms. Anyways, what that means is since that time, we've submitted our agreements, we submitted what we call listed projects, we've given them whatever engineering design contracts we've had, we've given them whatever cost estimates we have, soil reports, everything. Where FEMA has done, I believe, yes, they have finished all their field reviews, part of the process FEMA comes out and they look at all the locations. And part of that is so they get a feel for the project, making sure it's not some kind of existing condition and you're just trying to get FEMA to pay for it. So with that, next step is FEMA submits, prepares what we call basically damaged descriptions. They've almost finished all those for all the individual projects. As part of the process, we've submitted claims for ninety thousand dollars for what's referred to as emergency protective measures and debris removal. Debris removals, like the trees that fall, we had to get contractors out to clean it up, the crews maybe had to clean it up, that's that category. Emergency protective measures are things like overtime for PD, public works, if we have to put cheating or sandbagging in to protect different, say mudslides or roads or put up barriers or whatever, those are emergency protective measures. So what we've done is we submitted so far claims for ninety thousand. What we did, is a little more detailed than you probably would like, is under debris removal, we selected the pilot program, new program, but what that does, it allows us to actually get more of a recovery and includes our regular time. So typically, it's just overtime for staff, but this allows us to include regular time for staff, either preparing for the storm or cleaning up the storm during the regular hours. So there are some provisions and caveats, but for our purposes, that worked out the best, so we'll actually get more reimbursement than we would have otherwise. Now, the next thing is the council, as you know, you declared the local emergency for Tamalpais, Madrone and Forest. And so, and what that means, it waives our competitive bidding requirements, but it doesn't waive requirements for FEMA. And so what we did is at that time, from the storms, all the damage, we set the engineers, lose contract with them, to start doing a different design. Originally, we thought Tamalpais would be under the FEMA threshold of a hundred and fifty thousand. Turns out, based on the one quote we got from the one firm that we can get an estimate on, it was over two hundred thousand, so we've bid out that project. Bid opening for three hundred Tamalpais, approximate location is actually August 28th. We anticipate, hopefully, that we get more than one bid and that we plan to go to the council in your first meeting September with hopefully the award of that bid and can move that project along. And so I think one of the comments that we received from the neighborhood is why didn't you get quotes at the same time you bid out the project? There's, there's a problem with that and most of the problem is confusion with the contractors because on the one hand, you would be saying, bid on this, which are completely sealed numbers that they're competing against, plus has more requirements, or give us your unofficial bid. And so there's a little disconnect there and so we didn't, we didn't do that. We went initially because we thought it was under a hundred and fifty threshold, not thinking it's going to be that high, but, but it was. So that brings us to, so that's the update on three hundred Tamalpais. There's ninety-two Madrone. That estimate right now is about a hundred and twenty thousand, which is below the FEMA threshold, but we only received one quote from six firms we reached out to. You may recall at the last report I gave to the council, one of the contractors said, we're really busy, take the engineer's estimate, multiply it by three, that's our quote. So obviously, that's not going to work. Our question to FEMA, and we're waiting for an answer, is if out of six firms, you only get one quote and it's less than the threshold, can you move ahead with that? And we're waiting for response. So something for the council to keep in mind when it comes to Madrone is that the authority that you gave me was only up to sixty thousand, this is going to be a hundred and twenty thousand. So one scenario is even if FEMA says we could start, I'd have to go back to you at your September meeting even for approval. The other option there slightly is I could move forward with an agreement if we can with that contractor and in September, I would come to the council with a ratification of the contract because most likely the contractor would not have incurred my limit of sixty thousand because the project just be starting. So you'd be ratifying a contract... be ratifying a contract that was already approved. So you don't need to say any of that, but that's one option that you, you could consider. Okay, so the next project's 35 Berry Trail, approximate location. FEMA's indicated the removal of the debris, that's eligible. Repair of that mudslide that damaged the trail that flooded or covered the trail, that is not eligible. But the damage that we occurred on the trail to get the equipment in to clean it up is. And so we, we have that on the list. I think that's probably going to cost us $5,000 to $10,000. So we just have to get estimates and then fix that. On 173 Tamalpais and 46 Canyon, we're actually still working on cost estimates for FEMA. That's what they want. We give them design contracts, but they need the cost estimates in order to finish writing up 173 Tamalpais. The other that's a little more complicated is what we refer to as the scour of the head wall at approximately Six Bridge Court. There's a little concern by FEMA that we have no evidence that we own the culvert or responsible for maintaining it. Obviously, we maintain it, that's a given. So it's kind of a gray area. Right now FEMA's writing it up as it is eligible. That's our position. We're trying to find some documentation, but our guess is that may have been built before 1931, in which we're incorporated. So it's going to take some effort, work with the county, see if we even can find anything related to it. So there's that. And then there's all the pothole repair in Crescent Scenic. We actually just got that written up by FEMA. We actually have three estimates from contractors. Again, the difficulty is, I have authority up to 15,000. I could split the project up into two, in which case I could do the project. However, if one contractor wanted to do the project, combined, it would exceed my authority, but I could move ahead with it, come back to you, and again, in September, ratification, if that is indeed the case. So keep that in mind. Some projects not eligible. We tried to do emergency protective measures for video detection system on Sir Francis Drake and Willow. The loop detectors failed in the storm, and so we decided we just need to put that in, otherwise we were going to have a problem there traffic-wise. It turns out that that is not eligible for emergency protective measures because they consider that a permanent solution unless you're willing to rip out the road to put in loop detectors, take the video detection on. But your problem will be, that's no longer eligible for FEMA, and you'll have to go for emergency relief funding. So we've pretty much have just taken that off the list.
What's the video detection of the culvert, the water and the...
No, 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 I'm sorry. This is Sir Francis Drake.
Yeah, this is for the traffic light.
Yes. It's Sir Francis Drake and Willow is the traffic light, and it's video detection when certain cars built up, then the signal will cycle. The loop detection system is the one on the grounds when cars go over, over it.
Yeah.
Yes. And we installed the, the loop detectors were, didn't work, and so we installed the video detection system in lieu of the loop detectors.
I see.
And those are considered permanent. So we're just going to keep them permanent. And then the other thing, good news, well, not good, yeah, great, unknown if it's good news or not, is the mudslide here behind Perry Park. So FEMA said, well, you know, it didn't affect a facility, a trail, a ball field. And yes, we know, if you had another rainstorm, it probably would affect the field, but you know what? You're going to have to wait for that event to occur. She said, okay. And they said, apply for hazard mitigation funds. Hazard mitigation funds are released every time there's a federal disaster. FEMA puts out what's called hazard mitigation funds, so you could apply for funding to mitigate future hazards. And so we applied for Perry Park. That arm of FEMA said to us, you know what? That's not eligible for hazard mitigation. That's eligible for disaster recovery for FEMA. And so we are stuck in the middle of one side of FEMA saying the other side should be responsible. So the process is going to be, is we kept it on the list of projects, we are going to appeal because we know that the FEMA staff will write it up and saying it's not eligible. We'll appeal, telling them that it's not eligible for hazard mitigation because they said it's eligible for this. So stay tuned. But the only reason I bring that up is because things aren't nearly as easy as they seem.
And that's good news?
It's good news because it's not tonight.
Remind us, how many times does Town Hall have to flood before FEMA will hazard mitigate us into a new location?
Well, we did try that back in 2014, and after nine months of working with FEMA, they finally had a ruling that said, oh, by the way, we'll pay for removal of Town Hall, but if you need a new one, you're limited to $150,000. So we said, well, why would we do that? That was after nine months, and I think we spent $30,000 required studies and things just to be even to apply. And so FEMA is a bureaucracy, their staff might be good, but it runs up the chain, and somewhere, you never know in headquarters, if they might put the gabbage on something. So, but let me say, for the record, FEMA staff's been great to work with so far. Same with Town ES, so there's my shout out to both those.
What did Bush say? Heck of a job, Brownie, after Katrina. We appreciate your perseverance.
Yeah, it takes a lot of perseverance, I think, with any federal bureaucracy. And yeah, it gives one pause as to whether it's really worth banging your head against that particular wall. I guess sometimes it works. It's, I think psychologists call it intermittent reinforcement. So, so every once in a while, they come through, but dang.
You know what the big takeaway for me is, is take care of your personal property.
Yeah, pretty much.
Do you, do you think at this September meeting, you could also do this update because we'll have more people listening then?
Sure, I could do that. I guess ideally, maybe I could write up something.
Or maybe, maybe just a quick write-up that goes on consent so that, and we can just mention it, because I think it would be really helpful for people. Thank you for all your efforts. I know it's very frustrating.
Yes, thank you, indeed. All right. Public?
They left.
Yes, they, the public left on that one, sorry.
Okay, so I...
I know if you noticed.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Actually, I would like to adjourn in memory of Garth Parr, who died unfortunately last night. Liver cancer. He's a, a very valued member of the Fairfax community. A lot of people were really pulling for him. His, his cancer took over, I mean, there was a benefit scheduled at Perry's coming up on the 26th and 27th. That is now changing to a celebration of life. And I guess a benefit for whatever. There's a lot of musicians. There's whatever barbecue on Saturday, oysters on Sunday. It, it should be quite, quite the celebration of life. Garth gave a lot to this community, a lot of people cared about him. And it's, it's very sad for me to, I mean, I've known him myself for 30 years. Thanks for contributing so much to our community, Garth. Our heart goes out to you and the people close to you, Angelina Frost in particular. But there are many in the community who care a lot about Barth and Garth. And I'd like to adjourn in memory of Garth. So, thank you. We're adjourned.